All right, good evening. I'd like to call two more to the meeting. It's the Islam Meadow Public School Committee meeting. It is December 18th, 2017, and it is 7:00 PM. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and video recorded. And if we can all please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we can now roll call, starting to my left.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich FuChero.
Gregory Thompson.
Deirdre Neiu.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Farthing, Doctor.
Valerie Neer, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Pam Wilk, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Sowery, Department of Defense.
Excellent. We have the approval of some minutes. We have the approval of the December 4th, 2017 executive meeting minutes.
I think a motion approved December 4th, 2017 executive meeting minutes.
Okay, motion made?
Second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward 5-0. Okay, moving on, we have the approval of December 4th, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve the December 4th, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
Okay, motions made?
A second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward 5-0. Thank you. All right, we have committee and subcommittee communications. So if you'd like to start for us.
Sure. Great job by the seniors. Senior project was this past Thursday and Friday. I attended both sessions of Thursday. They did a great job. Congratulations to everybody that was in my group. MASC Board of Directors met Wednesday night. A lot of events will be upcoming next year, and I will get the dates out once they're affirmed to everybody.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, moving on.
Yeah, I've got quite a few items. First, I wasn't processing the presentations, so I was very sophisticated with some of the topics that I saw. At Meadowbrook, I went to the Grade 2 concert.
Concert.
With Ms. Neiu and I enjoyed the Grade 2 concert. Maple Shade, Mr. Fidette was telling me that they have partnered up with the Malden Elementary School, and they are, how do you explain to me? They're teleconferencing with us, learning how we're doing in Maple Shade, but they want to do it in Malden, which I think is fantastic.
Wow.
They were kind of mentoring that school. And then I did see the wall of gratitude in Mountain View, which is really wonderful. And the Calum Committee has begun the Grin Spoon election.
Do you want to say anything?
Okay.
Fine. Thank you. All right, Mr. Thompson.
You know what I'm saying about the MSBA?
Sure.
Because that's why I said, it's worth mentioning that we did apply for the Massachusetts School Building Authority program for reimbursement for the high school. This is our fourth year trying.
So the application went in in April, and then we had all through the summer waiting and waiting.
Finish off.
Nope, you can go. You don't want to touch it.
Fortune, no, I was trying to pass the buck. Isn't the buck stop there?
It does.
But we were not accepted into the MSBA program this year, so we will not be going to the town for projects. And we will have to talk about what we're going to do going forward.
And just to clarify, this was for the core program for a new high school or renovated high school. We do have the process going on for the accelerated repair at Meadowbrook. And Ms. Boucher, do you want to say anything about the MSBA's process and the high school not getting approved?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm very disappointed. I feel that, I understand why they have the process. I don't completely understand how a school system that takes care of their buildings, respects what they have, ultimately ends up being punished because other schools are condemned.
Right.
How do you get to that point? And I feel that those school systems should be punished by receiving at least less reimbursement money because you didn't put it in at the beginning. And I just find it's just, it's awful. I had nothing to say.
Well, I think to that point, though, I think Beth, and I agree with those points wholeheartedly. I'm glad you said that.
How do you do this?
And I think now it lies on us and our responsibility to start to make that point to the MSBA, because I think we've tried to go through the process and try to work within the process, but from what they've told us in that we're supposed to be rewarded, for lack of a better term, on maintaining a building, which is all that should happen anyway.
Right.
It does seem like we're being penalized in that they're funding projects, buildings that people have let go.
Right.
So clearly, they're not maintaining. So I think we need to make a better point to MSBA on the behalf of the town to try and state that point that we're trying to play within the rules, we maintain our building well, and we've been penalized for that. And you've offered other communities that have not maintained their buildings, projects, and reimbursement funds. And the reality of it is, and we all know this, we can't go without the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Right.
So you're caught between a rock and a hard place, and we are at their total mercy until they accept us into the process.
Right.
And they have not again.
Right.
So I guess, that's my thought.
Right.
I think we have to step up our...
And I think part of their explanation too was, or the way some other schools got funding, was they had overcrowding issues.
Right.
And you know, we don't live in a city that we're going, we may never have overcrowding issues, but to say we have a building that is just falling apart, you know, it really needs...
If they build those 600 units, you may have overcrowding issues.
That's right. I don't know.
Well, yeah, there's that. You don't know. But then I also feel like, you know, when Mrs. Marinier's lab is multiple times during the course of the year...
Right, has to be closed.
The students shouldn't even be in the room with the smell that's coming in there. And so now, what do we do with those students? That's maybe temporary overcrowding. Or, and I know that we're trying to make the students comfortable during the lunch period, but there's not enough seating in the lunchrooms for our students.
Right.
They're sitting on the floors. How is that safe? I mean, I understand it gives them an atmosphere where they can sit with who they want to be, and that's a great thing. But that is a type of overcrowding.
Right.
Do we have to sit and get that nitpicky? Maybe we do.
Right.
Maybe we're going to have to come up with all the...
But I feel like every year...
What about the bubbling water that used to happen in one of the schools, up through the, whatever is under our tile, asbestos or whatever, it used to bubble up through the water, and we had to fix that. You know, so if we have that happening again, do we have to close down that room?
Right.
Do we just have to start closing down rooms? Because they aren't working. When the water's dripping in on the kid's head.
Right.
Because we can't invest in a roof. Because we can't invest in a roof. Because if we invest in a roof, then they're not going to give us money for a new school.
Right.
Because we've put too much money into the school. So there's this fine line.
Right.
And it's tricky for us.
Yeah, it's pretty complicated.
Exactly.
It is.
It is.
Well, Beth, you did say no, right?
I did.
Guess I double-checked.
It was absolutely disappointing.
Well, it's sad too, because...
Well said.
I never really thought any of my kids would see a new school, but this is it. The little one might have seen like a half a year in one.
Yeah.
And it would have been a nice experience.
Well said.
For all of our kids.
All of us.
To Mr. Thompson's point, in terms of being caught, the accelerated repair reimbursement is 55 percent. So it's, you know, 55 cents on the dollar. So it is an excellent point that you really do want that if you want to do a comprehensive project somewhere. You want to look at their support.
Well, it's irresponsible and unrealistic for us to think that we could go to the town and say, "We want you to fund 120 million dollar projects."
Right.
And potentially, next year, we could receive 65 to 70 million dollars of that reimbursement to state.
Right.
It's just not going to happen. So you're at the total mercy of the MSBA.
No.
We follow the rules. We maintain our building, which maintained our buildings, which is responsible for the kids that are here now. And we're penalized for it. So, I don't know. Maybe make a bigger stink, and we make a bigger stink.
Right.
And invite them out here, and then go out to some of those meetings out there.
And I'd be curious to see how many Western math schools got paid.
That was going to be my question, to then have the list get...
And you know, you don't want to sound like sour grapes, but with the exception of the cities...
Right.
There's not a whole lot that happens, you know. And there's going to be a lot funded that way, but not so much this way.
Right.
And so, I mean, is, maybe their populations, so that's why it seems like they get more, but...
Right.
Well, I don't want to add fuel to...
Right, so there should be like a distribution to the eastern and western part regardless of...
I don't want to add fuel to Beth's fire, but there were no schools in the western end of the state.
Oh, so you've seen the list. The list is out, okay.
I know what the list is.
It's a flawed process.
It is.
It is a flawed process. And it's like anything, I think, a squeaky wheel.
And Gordon, Mr. Smith has been working with her, the MSBA...
And Sullivan, constantly.
...over the last two years.
She's caught in the middle because it's the board...
She's the liaison.
She's, yeah. It's the board, it's the Board of Directors at MSBA that ultimately make the decision.
And it's not because of a lack of trying, I truly believe that.
No, it's not.
We've done everything we've been asked to do. We followed all the rules. We've given all the documentation, answered all the questions, and...
More than once.
Looked at other statements of interest and that have gotten accepted.
So, up for another day, I think, is a discussion probably soon, and then we'll try to figure out what we're doing forward. I mean, the other option is to come up with a different strategy. I don't know what that would be, but we have to do something.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Anyway, communications.
All right. So continuing committee and subcommittee communications. I also wanted to mention, because I look back at the date, on December 6th, which was just after our last meeting, the high school had their winter concert.
Oh, yeah.
And I know a couple who were there. Another great performance put on by our music department. They had some really great songs, and it was just so lively, and it was just great. I also just want to make mention of it, because I know we're coming up on our winter break, or January 7th, the high school is doing their exam study night again at the library. So January 7th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, students can go into, you know, into the library and have some quiet study time or studying groups. And I know that they'll have some snacks provided at the library. And I know they've done this a couple of other times before, and it's been very popular. My daughter has been on...
And last year was the first year, but they, I think they did it twice during the year.
It's a great idea.
It is a great idea.
It's a great idea.
And the students love it. Everyone's well behaved, and I hope a lot of kids take advantage of it, because it's just a great resource to have in town.
It really is. It's a nice partnership with the local library.
Yeah. So that is all I have. So, if you have anything?
I don't know. I know Birchland just had their concert this past week, which I thoroughly enjoyed. I feel bad I can't do the daytime stuff as much anymore, but I did enjoy that. Eleaf's going to start kicking it up in January, getting ready for their event coming in February.
Still Eleaf Monopoly, I see today.
There is.
Blitz for that.
There's $30. I mean, when they're gone, they're gone.
Yep.
So, and we play it off, and we all want stripes. So there you go.
No stripes.
This is one of those affordable, you know.
Yeah.
All right, so that's all, yeah.
Perfect. All right. So moving on the agenda, we would have at this point the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none here tonight, we will move on to our presentations. And as we go down the list, we have the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction report, the renewal cycle update.
Yes, just a brief update that in fiscal year 19, so next school year, the following departments are up for curriculum renewal. 6 through 12 math, 6 through 12 foreign language, and 6 through 8 science. The projected budget is listed there, 100,000. And just to give you an idea of how they go through the process, every department already has all of their forms and is notified that they should begin to take a look at resources and be vetting things that they need. So they're in the middle of doing their needs assessments, or beginning to start them. It depends on what department it is. And once they do that, they complete the evaluation process, they submit a prioritized list of needs. And then from that, we, the district works to try to meet everyone's highest needs. Using that process, last year, we were able to meet between 85 to 100 percent of the highest of all of the department's needs last year. However, last year, we had a little bit of a different situation because we had a one-time increase to that line that went towards some science equipment. So it will, I'm not sure that our percentages will be as high next year.
So they're not budgeting $50,000 right now?
No, 100,000.
No, but the one-time...
Yes, there was $50,000.
In addition to...
No, we got 150,000.
We had 100,000 in the operational budget.
Correct.
50,000...
Is that a capital?
It's a one-time increase.
It was a one-time...
Wasn't capital.
No, it was free cash.
But the figure we've always used is 50,000.
No, 100,000.
No, we upped it to 100.
It was at 50, it went to 100.
Yeah, we did. We upped it to 100 a couple of years ago.
86, and then 100, yeah.
Okay, so we have 100, yeah.
But I think we had requested 150 within our own budget.
Right, we had originally...
It sounds uncompromising, the one-time free cash.
But I think as we go through the budget process, it's important to let everybody know the importance of continuing to look at increasing this line item.
Right.
To stay up with 21st century educational standards.
Well, I mean, you look, you have 6 through 12 math, who are not going to be looking for a complete overhaul at all. They will be, I know at the high school, they're going to look at one particular course. They've already narrowed it down to one course. That's their highest need. But just one course is, you know, can eat up a lot of that. And I know 6 through 8 science is going through a large overhaul so that we better align with the standards that were put out last year and the year before. And we're changing the way that that's going to look. So that's going to be probably our heaviest hitter with the curriculum renewal. And I don't know if we'll get all of what their needs are with what we currently have.
How much of it is actual physical textbooks?
I was just going to say that. So, well, in our current environment, in the last few years, and particularly this year, we do not advocate hard texts. We, you do need class sets, but because we have, we continue to increase our use of technology and access to technology, we want them to be looking at blended, a blended model of materials. And with science, you're always going to have hands-on materials for your lab settings. But then, we're asking them to look at resources that are online. Because those types of texts are not necessarily cheaper, but they're getting more savvy, and so a lot of the differentiation is already built in. You can have students have, read about the particular content, and it's already differentiated for, you know, for reading levels, if that's a support that they need. And then there's always, or some of them are really sophisticated, the links that go out to showing videos, and it's more multimedia.
So I know we've had this discussion, but a lot of it is subscription-based now.
Correct.
So it's out of our annual, out of this annual 100,000, how much will be looking for, as part of an ongoing subscription?
So sometimes, when you're first coming on, renewals aren't annual. They're usually in a five-year cycle.
Oh, really? So it is truly a curriculum renewal?
Or sometimes a six-year cycle, and we ask them to be...
Does that match our curriculum renewal?
We're in a five-year cycle, so we match most of them.
Okay.
And then, once we narrow down to what products they've vetted, and they think they like them best, and we get the quotes from them, then we maybe do a little negotiating with what, the number of years in the contract type of thing, or the number of years for renewal.
Should we get it to match the curriculum renewal?
Yeah, that's always the idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
But then we can't always fund it all, so you kind of push it some of it out.
Or more.
So six years is probably better than five.
Sometimes we say, "We've got the first three years for you," and then, yeah.
Yeah, interesting.
So when you do a lot of the online resources, and I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe you might know, do you find that there are some students who can't do some work at home because they don't have computer access in the evening?
We have...
As opposed to having a textbook that they can take home?
Right. So we have very, very few where we've run into that, and we make provisions for that. So there's, so just because you're going to find some really robust online resources doesn't mean you don't need a classroom set. You could have, you know, your internet could be out.
Yeah, right.
Very rarely, you know, we have a great IT department that keeps us up and running for the most part, right? So, but I mean, you have to have, you can't be shut down a day of learning because you can't have access to these. So there would be classroom sets, and there would be arrangements made at, through the school with any student who may or may not be able to access the materials, whether that would be, you know...
Right.
Going home with a device or a book.
Okay, great.
I always ask my kids, though, it's funny. It's like, they'll come home, and be like, "Do you know what Jean whatever is?" I'm like, "Don't you have a book?" Like, "Do you ever bring home the book?" Hey, I mean, I know she doesn't need a book. It takes two seconds to look at it. I'm like, "Don't you have a book?" So, do they, I say half that.
Yeah, the idea is that we would have class sets still, because you need to account for those other things. The great thing about a digital book, though, is that as information changes and updates, even if you have that book, you may not be getting the right information. So we want to make sure our kids are prepared with the right stuff.
I know, but it's still this old-fashioned, I go, "Don't you have a book?" Or sometimes I get annoyed because...
My biggest thing is trying to learn how to take notes.
Yeah.
And they, although our students are much more savvy at that and able to make that transition to annotating online if they had to.
Or I just keep thinking, "What are you doing on the computer?" It's like, "I'm doing my Spanish homework." I'm like, "Really, let me see."
Yeah.
Sometimes you need to have a mirror behind them because they can toggle back and forth so quickly.
You got the tricks, don't you?
The boy has to be, has to have something reflective behind him, yes.
This mirror? Yeah. It's fully a wall mirror.
Or a picture that, yeah, reflects, see what's on there.
People with older students...
Oh, yeah. It's a huge advantage. Nice.
That's it for, that's all I wanted to share with you for the curriculum case. And then I did, just for your information, provide what the current purchasing years are. And this does have revision based on a needed, if there's a need. So the, you'll see the following year, even after next year, are some heavy hitters. 9 through 12 social studies and K-5 science are big-ticket items, for sure. Particularly with the social studies standards ready to go out for public comment this winter. And we'll be seeing some changes with that.
That's why I said it's a conversation to keep going, that, you know, it costs money to keep up with these standards that are constantly changing, that we really don't have any control over.
Right, and the access to the, being equitable about the access to high-quality materials for our students and things that can meet their needs, yeah.
So to that point, that last year, we did have the 150. We should definitely, we should watch that, I think. And I don't know what we're going to do this year in terms of budget request, but we want to keep pace. So if last year, we needed the 150, they only get 85 to 90 percent.
Right.
Or 100 percent.
Especially if we drop back this year with 100,000.
Right.
Right. Do you think you'd be able to do that with 100,000?
Well, it would be easier. I mean, we'll get closer to 85 to 100 than we would currently. I mean, it's not going to be an EV, even split, but I've already had hard conversations with some of the department heads, letting them know that, you know, there are some needs within these departments. You know, 6, it's no lie, 6 to 8 science is going to be a big ticket. And, yeah, so that's going to be difficult.
It only goes so far.
And the expense last year is that you had old lab equipment.
Yeah.
So as you're looking to revamp and get new resources, be it a digital text or a regular text, you also want the lab experience to be equal to...
Yeah, absolutely, the hands-on.
That was part of the justification.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on, down to new business. We have 7.1 budget development timeline for fiscal year 2019.
Okay, so in your packets, this is a draft timeline, really, because as you go through the various dates of the various groups, you see at the, I'll take it to the end first, you see just the point, the bullet point where we talk about additional meetings after that February 5th discussion, where at that point, we'd be scheduling meetings with the town manager, the town finance director. One recommendation is to, similar to last year, probably schedule a meeting where we have the school committee meet with the town manager, and I would include the town finance director. So those are things to think about as we turn the page to the new calendar year in 2018. But taking you back to the front of the document, we've actually started the discussions. It began with our capital planning. Capital planning discussions will continue. MSBA, obviously, earlier in this meeting, that's going to be part of the capital planning discussions.
When is the capital plan scheduled, the deadline?
We are, we are meeting with the town manager, town finance director on Thursday. And we're also meeting with the superintendent of DPW and the new facilities manager tomorrow to look at the capital plan that was approved, the five-year plan that was approved here. Get some thoughts, and then bring back, probably in that January 8th meeting, more thoughts as to how you may want to prioritize as a district president.
Well, and the question for that night, I think, will also be, does the MSBA decision change that? I mean, we should, we should...
And that's going to be the biggest question to wrestle with.
Yeah, I don't know if it's an easy answer, but...
Well, I mean, I think it's worth a discussion on the 8th.
But we have time after that to then, we haven't submitted, or we have submitted?
We've submitted everything in terms of the capital plan. What we haven't done is prioritize, because generally, historically, not generally, I guess I should say, we've looked at answering the questions, are we bonding? guess I should say, we've looked at answering the questions, are we bonding? And there is potential, I think, this year to bond. That has not been the case in past years. And then the last few years, what's our decision, what's the school committee's decision around putting in for the MSBA process? With that point, I would say, we have the windows and doors project going now, the accelerated repair at Meadowbrook. I would recommend putting again in for the roof.
Well, I think that, yeah, I think we have.
Doesn't make sense.
Accelerator repair.
Because that's a tighter timeline than this, than regular MSBA.
Right.
Correct. That's due in February. Once you enter the difference, and this is something that I know all of you understand, but that's something that we need to continue to educate folks who are helping us plan capital, the accelerated repair is just that. It's looking for roofs, windows, doors, and it's looking to expedite the process of the core program. If you get assistance through the MSBA accelerated repair, they're looking for you to do that project, complete that project, and then have that building viable for the next twenty years.
Right.
When you, when we chose with the master plan to do a core project at the high school, you're looking to do comprehensive changes, for reasons such as a roof at the high school, similar to other roofs. It's out of warranty, it's been repaired and maintained well, but those repairs lose their efficiency the further out you go.
Only so many band-aids.
Right. The electrical is probably, the electrical system is our most urgent need, given that it's running at its maximum capacity. And so you really have to literally take something off the system to add something to the system.
And Gordon, I just want to remind everyone that those are two separate entities, the accelerated and the core are very separate, so one does not impact the others, I think that's important.
Right. The piece that I had to explain recently, in just discussing what we've submitted so far, is that if you put in for the core, you're looking for that comprehensive project. If you put in for accelerated repair, you can't come back later to the core.
For twenty years.
Right. So you put in, you know, if you need, as we did with Meadowbrook, if you need all three roofs, windows, roof, windows, and doors, we put all three in. They ultimately gave us the windows and doors, but we would recommend that we put back in.
Yeah, but that's why it never made sense to do an accelerated repair on this building.
Right, you have other...
Because there's other issues.
Electrical system falls out of accelerated repair.
There's other issues that don't fit the criteria of accelerated repair.
Right. So with that, that part of the discussion, capital is ongoing, we've also started our discussion with the leadership team in terms of what needs are, and I've shared with them your overarching goals, you know, in looking at certain things, such as, we know that we have the challenge of the kindergarten revolving count closing, so there's a challenge there. We also know that as we continue to expand technology, that not only have we discussed at the leadership team, but also here at the school committee, we've discussed the idea of, as we continue to expand and we build our inventory, so in the schools, there really is no waiting in terms of, I want to utilize technology in my classroom almost on a daily basis, I can do that. We probably need the technology integration specialist, which is a licensed DESI professional. And so we want to look at that, and so how do we budget for that? How do we transition into that position through our budget process? Both possibly asking for the increase, but also within our budget, we've become, I think, very good at looking at what can we shift, what are we no longer utilizing? And then we did that last year with the socio-emotional. Yeah. So those discussions, we had one discussion on December seventh. We were going to have a discussion on the twenty-first, I think, actually, given how many activities are going on in our schools, I did, I'm going to send them the budget request form that we talked about on the seventh, so I'll give them instructions, but we'll